Seven thirty P M. Ms. Lambert will not be with us. Lisa will not be with us, she's ill, and Mr. Gallagher is on a cruise. We all were on a cruise. We are on television, so watch your mouth smart. I'd like to take the agenda out of order this evening since Ms. Presser is here from M A S C. With no objection from, if there's no objection from the committee, I'd like to take the superintendent search update as our first item of business and.
Okay, as chair of the screening committee, I'll give you a brief little thing. We had two meetings to begin with, with the screening committee to discuss the process, review the resumes, we had twelve resumes. Pick semifinalists and discuss the interview questions, and then on January thirteenth and fourteenth, we interviewed five candidates. Originally six candidates were picked and one candidate dropped out. And after much discussion, four candidates were picked to move on as finalists. And in alphabetical order, those candidates are Thomas Aubin, past superintendent director of Greater Fall River Vocational School District. Kelly Fay, coordinator of curriculum staff development and grants from Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School. Susan Cuska, past assistant superintendent for administration and personnel of Wayman Public Schools. And our own Jenna Lesko, the assistant principal, director of data and assessment at Shoshine Valley. And before I get to Dorothy, I just wish to thank all of those who participated in the screening committee, and I'm gonna name them. John Bagni, Frank Boddy, Angela Kyra, Joseph Connors, Sheila Fitzpatrick, Ron Fusco, Paul Geddick, Jim Gillis, Richard Lavoy, Glenn McIntyre, Lindsay Robinson, Anna Maria Shrim, and Dinette Sandell. And I'd also like to thank Dorothy Presser and Tracy Novick from M A S C for their guidance in this process. And you're.
Or turn it around and thank, thank the screening committee for their work, they were great to work with. So now we're at the point with, you have the finalists, I believe you all received packages. Just to remind you, only the resumes are considered public documents, the other documents in the package belong to you as the hiring authority, but are not public. So the next step in the, the ne- couple next steps in the process, I know that Karen worked very hard to find dates when you would all be available for the final interview. And I believe those dates are February twenty fourth and February twenty sixth. So the members of the school committee who are on the screening committee had a preference for two interviews in the evening. So that gives you a chance to interview all four candidates and you would make, deliberate and make your decision after the final interview on the twenty sixth. So just a couple of questions about that before I get to the other parts of the process, which is what time would you like to start?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
What if in the next phase of the process, after interviewing the candidates, the committee as a whole would like to visit, have site visits?
I'm gonna get to that after, yes.
Okay.
So, so generally those visits happen before the interviews. And the, so the interview is the last step of the process. So what I would like to be able to do is set up those site visits in both directions or talk to you about the site visits in both directions tonight. So I can get going on setting them up. Does that make sense?
If it makes sense to you, it makes sense to me.
All right. So, so let's put aside the interviews for a minute then and talk about the site visits. In general, there's a site visit that not everybody has to participate in, 'cause it's during the day, to the site, to the district where the candidate is coming from. And then the candidate comes to Shoshine to spend some time at Shoshine. My thought was, first of all, there's a couple candidates who right now don't have a site to visit. But what we still do is set up groups of people for you to talk to that they've worked with. So you won't get a tour of where they were, but you'll still get a chance to talk to the people that they've worked with and ask them questions and get a flavor for the candidate.
Who picks those people, the candidates?
Well, so, what we do is tell them the groups of people that you would like to talk to, and they pick the people. So what I, just thinking about what typically happens, I would suggest that you would wanna talk to some teachers that they worked with, some administrators, some parents, some municipal officials if they've had a position where that's appropriate, and, um, I think, and some students. So I would, so I would suggest, unless you wanna add or subtract groups from that, that I would go to them and say, here's, here's the different stakeholder groups or cohorts that the school committee would like to talk to. The candidate kinda sets up the day and hosts you at the visit. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. And then coming to Shoshine, in a sense, it's a mirror image, that they would have the opportunity to tour the school, to probably go into s- uh, some shops and some academic classrooms, and then have the opportunity for a meet and greet with parents, a chance maybe when faculty can stop in and talk to them, community members who might wanna talk to them as well. For your internal candidate, structured a little bit differently, but in fairness to the internal candidate, you wanna give some of those opportunities as well. So we would set it up a little differently, but we would still have it happen.
So my concern then is from a timing perspective, I'm away from the sixth to the fifteenth, as is Mr. Gillis. So would we have, could we fit those, so you, what you really have is eight visits between technically, between four people?
Right, right, but they could be happening on the same day, right? The school committee could be going in one direction for one candidate and another candidate could be coming in this direction.
Well, how many, how many people would you expect?
Whoever can make it.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I've had, I've had site visits where only one school committee member was able to go on the site visits, and I've had one where more can go. So it's basically whoever can make it and is interested in going.
Do you think it would be possible to set those up, all of them, before the twenty fourth?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Okay.
And we could divvy them up?
Yeah, yeah, I think we absolutely could do that. So, I mean, there, with, before the twenty fourth is obviously a week of no school, so not much is gonna happen during that week. But I think between the, the two weeks before school vacation and those couple days, even if we have to do it on the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth, you still have, and you still could be able to fit it all in before the twenty sixth. So if you, if you give me permission to go ahead and do that, then I'll go ahead and get to work on setting those up.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, we wanna vote for, on the committee, I have the whole committee vote, so I guess you wanted to set them up for you, want me to make that decision?
I mean, at this point, we're at the committee, so does anybody have any objection to Dorothy setting up the finalists?
Right.
These are all daytime.
These are all daytime, yes. Yep. Yeah, and then sports, so the school committee members who are able to go on, so when the candidate comes to Shoshine, there's really no school committee involvement. You're really getting report back and the people who have talked to the candidates. And then for the visits to the candidates' district, the people who go just, you know, report back to the rest of the committee there, their take on the visit.
So you would, Dorothy, you would be talking to your candidate and telling them to prepare, group, uh, setting up a date that would work?
Yep. Yep. Setting up a date that would work, yep, yep, and I would obviously work through Karen.
I got you, okay.
Are you also, I'm sorry, do you also attend, please?
No, I do not attend the site visits.
And actually, the visits here are also good for the candidate to decide if they really wanna be here as well, 'cause that's.
Yep, yep, so in, yeah, it's sort of an audition for.
Right.
In, in both directions, right, in, in that case.
And the twenty fourth and twenty sixth, uh, plan.
Are, yes, are firm, yep, yep.
Are on the.
Yes, 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 yes.
They are firm.
That's fine, well, I would, no objection.
Do we pick a time?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, you'll have two interviews each night, and particularly last night, you'll want to be able to have some conversation after that interview. So starting at seven thirty might be a little late for those nights, starting earlier would definitely be preferable.
Would you tend to average, right, we tend to be?
Um, so that was my next question, actually. The interviews are usually either an hour or seventy five minutes.
I interject, after interviewing all of them, I think an hour is, was plenty.
An hour is fine.
We, uh, we found that some of the candidates and Dorothy, you know, finished early.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Some didn't.
An hour is adequate, an hour is adequate.
An hour, I think it's, yes.
Six fifteen and seven thirty, something like that?
Uh, six thirty and seven thirty, just to give everybody time.
Well, you wanna give a, like a fifteen minutes between, right?
Six thirty, seven forty five, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it.
That's reasonable.
Okay, I will get that set up, and I'll work with Karen on getting the site visits here and any information about the site visits in the other direction. So the last thing to talk about then is questions for the interview. It's not a matter for executive session to go and plan your questions for the interview, unfortunately. So what we often do is ask committee members to submit three questions apiece and sort of rank, this is my favorite question, this is my most important. And then I had actually talked with Bob a little bit prior to this, when we were trying to get things set up, about then having Patty and I, because Patty knows the questions that were already asked. Patty and I worked together to set up what that interview, the, the list of questions for the interview, what that would look like. What would be the other question?
Well, I'm not a fan of canned questions, that's, I'm, I'm just, I've been doing this a long time, and that's, I'm just one vote.
No, I'm, yeah, you do my.
I'm just not a fan of canned questions, and then I never have them.
You, so you have a free flow kind of thing?
That's what I would prefer, but that's just my.
I agree with that, Bob, you were very rigid in the last time.
I know, but I have an issue with that, that you ask different questions to different candidates, and so it's really not fair to that.
Everyone's different about that.
Yeah.
I don't mind that, like, when we asked our questions, yes, they were canned, and people didn't really ask any following questions, which they should have done.
Right.
Whereas at this, we should have some canned questions and then follow up with other things that you're interested in, you know, that maybe they said something you'd like, want them to expand on. But I think it's kind of unfair to interview candidates and ask totally different questions to everybody, you know, or just what, you know, I don't know, I don't like that. I think it's unfair to the candidate, I think every, it has to be equal.
So can I just, so generally there is a list of questions that are asked, but there's no requirement that that, those be the only questions asked or that you can't ask different questions of different candidates. So often what we do is say, you know, here's, here's kind of the basic list that will be asked of everybody and the, the chair. You know, anyone can ask the chair, can I ask a follow-up, can I ask another question, so you, maybe it's sort of a blend of just canned and, um, I don't know, canned as well.
Right. Right. Mm-hmm, yeah.
If, if, if that's the case, we cannot have thirteen questions, okay, that was way too many, we have to.
Yep. Yep.
Right, you're right, that was too many questions.
No, five or something, something, and if they're generic enough, then they can expound, and then we can, and we can follow up.
Right, right. Did you have thirteen members of the committee?
Fourteen, fourteen.
Does anybody have a question?
Fourteen.
Well, sort of.
Just about. I didn't, but then, then Jimmy got sick, so I had to ask a question. But I did, I, you know, we all suggested questions, so.
Yeah.
We had too many questions, some of them are almost the same.
But I would, you could also suggest that, you know that list you gave us of suggested questions, I think there was a lot of good questions in that for our school committee to ask.
What, and I think. Oh, yes.
So I think it would be nice maybe to send them out, yeah.
Oh, I can definitely get those back to you, absolutely, absolutely.
Because there were a lot of questions that, you know, I said, oh, that'd be for the school committee, not.
Yeah, there, and actually there were a couple suggested questions when we were discussing, where we said, you know, that's better for the school committee to ask.
Right, yes.
Why don't you draft something and.
I was, well, we have it.
There's ten of us, and maybe ten of us, hopefully, ten of us at the meeting, maybe we can have a series of five questions for each candidate.
Yep.
Right. Less than thirteen, no. Right.
And obviously you won't be able to ask all of us a question of each candidate, but there'll be time left after those five questions, so if you're not on the list of five,
Right. Sure. Right.
You can throw in your own question, I mean, you can always ask your own question, so.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
I think that would be a fair compromise.
Doesn't matter who asks the five canned questions.
No, no. So in terms of then determining what those five questions are, do you want to submit suggestions to Patty and I? Do you want, how would you want perceived of that?
I suggest you guys just do it based on, you were at the interviews, you saw what questions worked and what didn't.
And I'm comfortable with you and Patty forming a five questions.
I know, all right. Do you find that these questions are gonna be different than the ones you had before, or are they gonna be similar? Oh, I would say different, I mean, they might be a couple that are similar or close, but, yeah, but, yeah, these are going to be a little more involved.
Make 'em tough.
For those of us who weren't there.
No cupcakes.
Right.
I just.
Right.
What?
No cupcakes.
No cupcakes, I know.
I know, and too many cupcakes we had.
That's fine, and if you wanna ask something else, Bob, that's fine, yeah, good.
Right. Okay, so you don't wanna see a list of questions that maybe might.
Sound out, you and Dorothy, give us full confidence in you.
All right, all right then. Okay.
Let's go, no more, no homework.
I think you had some, you had some definitive thoughts after.
I know, okay. Right, I did.
Your own decisions, you can figure it out, I have full confidence in you.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanna make sure I've covered everything that I wanted to cover. Um, we have dates, we talked about site visits, and we'll know how to arrange that, and we talked about questions, so I am all set. So I.
The only thing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, no, I shouldn't have dropped it.
The only thing I would ask is that if we set up a site visit and some of us aren't available, I'm gonna try to make it to all of them, but if, if there's a site visit that nobody's available for, we should let them know well in advance, so, and maybe we can reschedule, so if there's an issue.
So while I'm here, maybe I can just, do you have some sense, Karen, of schedules, having worked to find the two dates?
I can tell you that Paula will be the one that will probably have the most conflicts because of her work schedule.
Okay.
She's in every other day, every other week is days, every other week is nights, she is actually switching her weeks so that she will be available that week for us.
Okay.
So she, she, I would probably not even count Paula as, as somebody that would be able to go do site visits, but I, I would ask her, I will call her, I won't, so.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just work with you and work, work with your awkward.
Yeah, I think she's the only one that could have the major problems.
Yes, okay, and it sounds like some other people are traveling who may have some difficulties too.
Yes, good, you're gonna be around most of the time.
Yeah, I would just ask if it's possible not to schedule them between the sixth and the thirteen, fourteen. That's why I asked, of course.
The sixth and the fourteen, okay, yep, I think, um, we will work on that.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, no promises, but I'll work on it. Okay, any other questions for me? All right, I'll be in touch.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Dorothy.
We do have a grievance this evening, so a chair would entertain the motion to go into executive session from which we will return.
So moved.
Is that roll call vote, we have a motion and a second roll call, Paul?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion is unanimous, two thousand and nineteen, motion by Mr. News second, someone over here.
Second.
Second from Mr. Fusco, any questions, comments, additions, alterations, or deletions? All those in favor, and opposed, motion carried unanimously. There are bills going around from Mr. Greenspan and.
Ah, so move Mr. Greenspan and John Greenspan.
Motion for approval of Mr. Greenspan's invoices, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously, let El McAvoy invoice.
Move to McAvoy invoices, should make this to.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. There is no correspondence, questions from residents and staff, anyone? Hearing none. Student representative is not here with us this evening, superintendent's report, this has.
So one of the things we've been talking about over the past year is our fiftieth anniversary celebration, and, as we know, it's now. So with everything going on between the superintendent search, we think it would be in the best interest to hold off on the fiftieth until September. So the building opened in September nineteen seventy, so if we do it in September, we can have it coincide with our open house or our homecoming. And that gives us more time to really focus on it, really make it a big event. I've been talking to John Bagni about it, I mentioned it at our last staff meeting, and we really think that's, that would just give us more time to have a better event. We can really publicize it and do a little bit more to really showcase our school. So, um, we're okay with that, that's what we'd like to do, so till until September, October, we'll coordinate without cost, we'll, like I said, around the homecoming, so we can really show off our school.
Sounds good, can I ask a question?
Okay. Uh.
Sure.
I'm sorry, what happened to that truck, did we finish it?
Uh, no, we have not, um, the truck is purchased.
It'll be finished by September.
The truck could be finished by September, the problem is I don't believe we will even break even on it.
Okay.
Based on the number of tickets we would need to buy, we would need to sell in order to cover costs, I don't think they realized how much money would be needed to sell. So we paid about ninety thousand for it, they need a minimum of sixteen thousand in parts, and then there's something that we can't do ourselves. We can still attempt, I, I mean, if you guys are on board with that, but the concern was, it, it owes money, um.
Were this not a food truck?
No, we bought a nineteen seventy truck for a fiftieth, the previous intent was to have us work on it, build it up,
Nineteen seventies?
and then sell lapel tickets for some time. Um, so, I'm still trying to get some final numbers on that, but right now, I think the cost.
Okay.
Do you think we should use a few years to kinda showcase it, and then maybe do something like that?
That would be a better idea.
Right, you call it, you lose it right away.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Right.
What's the point?
I mean, it's something for the kids to work on, it's a great tool for them to have an automotive, and Autobody was gonna do some of their bodywork as well, paint and stuff, so.
Well, maybe what we can do is do things that, you know, make it look good for September, right?
Yeah. And then have, you know, grand plans and what else we can do with it, right?
Maybe not right.
Actually, if it's just gonna park out there for September, it doesn't have to be.
Right.
Well, yeah, these sort of things maybe.
Doesn't really, yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll talk to Dave about it.
Lipstick on a pig.
Purple.
Of course.
Purple lipstick.
Yes, I can, I'll work with him on that. Just so you're aware, in the current budget, we actually have money to take down trees. So we have hired a company, they're gonna take down about six or seven trees on the front of the building. If some of you remember a few years ago, where we built the trees outside of Machine Tech, actually fell and landed on our neighbor's car, blocked the street. Police had to actually divert people through our parking lot because they couldn't get down the street. So we've tagged about six or seven trees, they'll be here, we've already talked to abort the police. As soon as we get a concrete date during February vacation, the police said they'll be here, it was just a couple hours notice, but then it gets a detail to be here for us. But we're wait, purposely waiting for February vacation because they will have the stage and the child care parking lot and it's on the outside. So we don't want to bring people here, and there are two trees we don't have a price for yet that are up on the baseball field that the past couple storms are leaning, some of the branches have fallen, we're gonna try to get a quote when they're here for that, just those one and two trees. But just so you're aware, that we'll have stuff going on from the building.
Is Chet taking down some trees that need, dangerous?
Yes, they're mark, they're currently marked, and we have this caution tape around them right now with orange tape on them.
Got you. Sure.
I like all those trees.
But you can tell them to look to the danger.
There you go, there you go, I know, I know, yeah, when they, when they, yeah, yeah, as long as they don't, as long as nobody gets hit, I, I don't you mean, Melody?
Yeah.
Now that we.
And it all, and I think we ended up doing.
You don't wanna run your car.
Yeah, so, so that's the concern.
That's gotta be three hundred and fifty.
So I just wanted to let you know that. Good news about the town of Bedford, Nancy has been wonderful, so we have the town manager and one of the principals coming here for a tour Friday morning. New town manager, she has not been here, so we're happy, and we have a senior, Grace Clark, which most of you know, who's actually gonna give them the tour. That spoke to her about it, and, yeah, and she has shared her experience.
That's awesome, that's really great, awesome.
Amazing Grace.
They weren't as encouraging for her to leave, so she said it was the best decision she ever made to come here, so she'll be presenting Friday morning.
She should say that every hour on the hour.
So.
Well, they've only given us an hour.
They're only here for an hour, take it every minute.
So the focus is gonna be on just bringing them around, showing them how great our school is, we will put together some materials for them to take. But the goal is just having them here, like I said, they haven't been here before, so she's a new town manager, and we think that'll be her school.
Well, the middle school principal hasn't been here either, has he?
No, no, so.
Well, he, I mean, he really responded, I was really pleased with that.
Yeah, so, so thank you Nancy for that, so it's good.
No, don't thank me, Chris.
Um, I have some application updates for you, um, so just go over the, the top chart, so to speak, it's just the applicants for town. Um, as been mentioned before, Jenna Lesko's been great, she's been having interviews here as many as possible, especially for the town of Tootsbury. As you know, having them out, always welcoming into the town, so she's really worked hard to have those done during different open houses, grand night and stuff, so that's been very successful. The next one kinda gives you an idea where we were at last year versus this year, we're up in total, Wellington's the biggest increase. And the bottom chart has been asked before, so I just put that in there for you to actually give you the percent breakdown by town. Ideally, we would love to have five hundred applicants, because if we accept three sixty, we know realistically we'll probably only have three forty. So the more applicants we get, the better off we are, so.
How many do you usually accept, three sixty?
Um, we've done three fifty, three sixty before, again, knowing that people won't change their mind over summer or by the time they put these applications in, you know, who knows what's gonna happen, we, we never end up with as many as we accept, so.
How many students in this year's freshman class?
Three, oh, three oh eight, I believe it's, yeah.
And how many works that?
I don't have to look, I don't know that.
Thank you.
Um, other than that, I have the capital budget, I know it's on a different spot on the agenda, I'd be more than happy, so I will give you the quick highlights. You have all received that back in December, unfortunately, we did have to cancel our advisory dinner because of the weather. So as you can see, it's in line with what we have been sharing with the town managers and the state committee in the past four or five years, giving them, you know, a new, this is our plan, we're gonna stay within this plan, it gives us a little broker equipment, but allows for the bond issue. We've got some, about seventy thousand dollars in Perkins, we have sixty seven thousand coming out of revolving accounts, which, you know, it could be between automotive, Autobody. Our L P N program actually has helped fund different things for our day school program in the past, and we have the cafeterias in here as well, carpetology. And then it comes down to the one point two million being funded by our town assessment. So just quickly to what you all know, this was a great budget process, in my opinion, we, we had a lot of great requests this year. I was hoping to fund all of them, can't, as you know, some of the things that you see in here might have been zeroed out, the reason they were zeroed out, some things were moved to the operating budget. Some things we were fortunate enough to be able to do this year, we have a little leftover Perkins money that we were able to write some amendments for D D C so we could give them, you know, some printers and cameras that they've been looking for, Down and Bracken Arts, they requested some maintenance, ceiling tiles, electrical, we were able to do that with existing funds, there was some flooring that, as you know, under the maintenance budget, there's twenty five thousand annually for that. So we were able to do a lot of it, so just because you see it at zero doesn't mean we didn't take it serious or we didn't do it. We either funded it or we moved it off into an operating budget, or we looked into other possibilities about, you know, the O two down line, so.
So would the F Y two thousand twenty one, original recommendation, would that be in line with the five-year plan that we got last year?
Typically, it is not.
It's not, so, so my question would be, what is the money differential, either up or down, between last year's projected capital budget and this year's recommended capital budget, two thousand twenty, F Y two thousand twenty one?
The F Y twenty one is the original budget submitted by all of the teachers and department chairs, and then I worked with the department chairs and the vocational director to come down to the final recommendation, which is in line with the amount that we agreed to assess the towns. We are finding, working with the grant manager, what would be Perkins eligible, or is there something else out there for us? So the original is what was requested, some departments have some of the same request year for year, but most of them don't. They submit something and then, you know, like engineering's new in here, so you'll see a forty five thousand dollars for engineering, and we've applied for a two hundred thousand dollar math skills grant, which we're hopeful, but it required a match. So there's forty five thousand in here, it's new, so you would have seen that, drafting had submitted for some additional equipment, but withdrew it knowing that they've just received equipment from other grants as well. So that's the biggest difference between them. Um, I can go through, you know. Um, I can go through, you know, some of the highlights, it's the automotive tire changer, spot welder, and Autobody, we've got a conduit bending and electrical. I just talked about the engineering program, we've got some rolling flat bench drivers and Brac Arts, believe it or not. Brac Arts has stepped up, they've been producing signs for us, they've been supporting our school store, um, they've been amazing. So, this will help them to really assist us in creating new things around the building, to help move, you know, our materials that we need for different grand nights in our house, so we've funded that. Heidi Moonen is extremely excited for her mother-child patient simulator, you know, she can actually see it give birth, I said, I don't know if I wanna see it.
Are you sure?
Um, that's what she tells me.
I was gonna ask you what that is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so she's, we have a sim man down there that draws blood and you can diagnose him, that was sixty five thousand dollars way back when, I asked the question. The prices have come down significantly, um, so, yeah, so she's pretty excited, like I said, I don't think I wanna see it, but she's pretty excited over it, right? That's what she's down there for.
I wanna ask you for the details.
Um, so, and under maintenance, there's a lot, and as you can see in purple, which I'm hoping as the year kind of closes out, depending where we are, we have a few vacant positions, if there's funds available, I would like to do a few things around the building, um, still cleaning the parking lot. We need some exterior equipment, um, lawn mowers. We've gone back and forth with buying an attachment to plow turf fields. Um, right now, we can't get out there, we have a John Deere that has the proper tires. I have all the tires on the tour. But they have the tires that they can actually be on the turf, but you need a special attachment with PVC on the end of the plow in order not to do damage. So, that's in here. We hire one of the towns to come in and actually sweep our parking lots for us, we've been working with them for as long as I've been here. Again, there's a small attachment you can buy, that we can do some of our own when the parking lot gets excessive out there, instead of hiring someone come in, and we can do it. This is something that, you know, if we had these tools, we'd be able to do some of ourselves. Um, and then we have a replacement of our energy management system, I don't believe it or not, the system it's running is on a very outdated, I wanna say Windows. And they're afraid, um, in talking to Scott Iwona, we don't have a computer that old to replace it. So, this is something we need to do. It has gone down twice this year, um, it controls everything, from opening the dampers, the air conditioning, the, you know, boilers. Um, this is something that we really need to take a look at, so these are some of my highlights of maintenance. Athletics, a hundred thousand dollars for a storage unit, I mentioned that earlier. When you look at the cafeteria, on the left side, we have a patio, on the right side, it's kind of that dead corner. I would love to build a little unit for our wrestling mats, for our cheerleading mats, a couple of tables and chairs. Right now, during wrestling season, they're in the cafeteria. Um, it's, they stay there for the season, they can be damaged, um, unfortunate, not intentionally, but unfortunately, and we're constantly moving them in and out anytime we have an event in there, and it also prohibits us from really expanding the cafeteria and adding different things, because we, like, a cafeteria is not big. Um, it's just not, so this will help that. The cheerleading mats are stored behind the stage, it's the same kind of thing, anytime we have an event, they're constantly moved in and out, there's a removable mon- million that the cheerleaders actually have to take out in order to get these things back and forth. So, we would build it ourselves, and it would house some of those things for us, that it would just make it a little bit, you know, easier for our, like.
Is it gonna be conditioned space, heater, anything? Cause if you put those mats in a space of storage and it's out in the winter.
I asked the question, I was told they would have some climate control in there, because that's exactly what I said, I mean, especially, you know, they understand, they, whoa, they're very expensive.
Okay, that'd be my question. Very expensive. Okay.
I'm surprised how expensive, uh, cheerleader pants are, I had no idea. So, yes, I agree, it would have to make sure that these would be conditioned appropriately, that anything in there would be bent in, um, you know, like I said, I
Okay.
if they're warm, I would even love to put some tables and chairs. Right now, every time we have an event, they're owed down by the Coroza Fields House, in that storage unit, so we're constantly.
And you think that's enough money?
I'm hopeful. Um, I was.
Can I get some numbers together before we start?
Um, I was given a number, I think it was the, and we just walked in.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was actually looking at something, what was it?
The storage facility is building.
So, so we've had, we've had conversations about it in.
So, yes, I'm sorry, we're still on it, yeah, yeah. On how much it's gonna cost?
So, familiar with what you wanna do there?
Yep.
And that hundred thousand dollars seems like that's adequate to do what you want?
If we have people here.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and that was.
Yeah, if people are here are gonna build it, yes.
And then turn it. Yeah.
And that was the conversation we had, that would be.
How big of a structure are you thinking?
Um, it's, it's about, it's, uh.
Compared to this room?
This room, it's probably a little bit, it's probably about the same size as this room.
Okay.
There we go.
Dimension wise, it's probably almost identical to this room.
Access from the building or access from outside?
It's kind of big.
Outside, so what we'll do is you would, actually, if you go outside, walk out that door, there's a ramp that goes down, that ramp would turn into that, which you wouldn't have to go down a ramp to get into the store.
Yeah, cause there's mats.
They're on wheels, so they have to wheel them outside, in and out, it would be mostly for, cause they're in sanitary, as you mentioned, I thought they, you know, leaving them in the lunchroom is kinda
Yeah.
a little scungy. Um, they wheel those out, put them in there, and then some of the larger table stuff would also fit into that room. So that the cafeteria could kind of be left as a cafeteria and not have to have all their stuff be, be all around, that's the big thing. You'd lose one window, one window out of the school store, not a big deal, not, we'll have DDC paint a sunrise in there or something.
You have it planned together.
It would be nice.
But for the most part, it doesn't really affect the building at all, it's a dead corner.
Yeah.
Right, and people complain from the trash in there, and you can't really see in that corner anyway, so.
So, match the brick that's on the building, um, have to pitch the roof away from it, you know, things like that that are, it wouldn't be as high as what's there.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't need for a garage door.
Asphalt room.
Yep, yep, asphalt room, yeah, cause it wouldn't be flat, to, to make it look right, we'd have to be a, a pitch roof.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Just couldn't be pitched back, obviously, from the building, it's gonna be two corners stuck in the building, so we'd have to be a shed room.
Okay.
All right, that's the whole idea of it, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you also.
Can I ask some, um, questions?
You, you may.
Auditorium anywhere in there?
I, um, Mr. Gettich and I actually had a conversation about that earlier. We think it's, it's bigger conversation about expanding the building, um, rebuilding, starting over, we just think it's a long-term decision that the facilities subcommittee really needs to pass.
It's not adequate as is, and they wanna afford money out of it.
Right. Right.
But what are we gonna do for, like, certain programs?
Would, I think we just need to talk about it and decide what.
You know?
So, like, I would.
The National Honor Society, stuff like that, that we usually use the auditorium, what are the, you know?
Yeah, we've been using the cafeteria for different events, like, I know we have a play in March that they've, they actually looked around to see if we should rent from one of the schools, but they decided that having it on cafeteria would be adequate. Um, we've, we already do the LPN capping and a few other things in the cafeteria, so, you know, those things will just transition into things, and having our staff meetings and. I mean, the auditorium only fits a hundred and forty, it doesn't even hold all of our staff.
Right, I know, it's.
And I don't think spending two hundred thousand dollars on ceiling, or s, or staging, um, until we have a bigger conversation, I mean, you know, ideally, if we made it in a seminar room and don't, on performing arts, you know, someplace on the ground would be more ideal. Or somehow, I don't know if we could expand that into electronics, or there's things that are a bigger conversation, in my opinion, than just looking at the auditorium, like, if we're gonna build performing arts, we should build it that we can have a minimum, you know, ideally, we'd want thirteen hundred, so you can have a full class meeting, right now, the only place to do that is outside the football fields, you know, so.
We will cover the football.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hold, it's not gonna fit, no, I just get it, uh, but, so it's just a bigger conversation of what direction are we looking to band-aid that, like I said, and Mr. Gettich and I actually just spoke about it today, that that's something that the facilities subcommittee needs to, you know, meet again.
So, would you use the auditorium for something else, I mean, so, so you need to do, but you need to fix some, thanks for that, okay.
A seminar room.
I think about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
But if we turned it into a seminar room, you know, the ceiling, the seating, you know, you could actually put a classroom behind the stage.
Uh-huh.
Right.
We need classroom space, so all those things would be great, you know, we have the one seminar room down on the science wing, which is wonderful, and it's used all the time, and it's used all night long.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, sure.
So, you know, we've talked about dental programs at night, we've talked about other things at night, and to have another big space would be ideal for us, but there's other pieces that go along with it.
And then my other question, I just, cosmetology. They asked for expansion renovation of their shop, is that coming to something else, or?
Well, so the bakery moved down to culinary.
Yeah. Right.
So, the bakery right now is vacant, and we're in the process of getting some square footage numbers
Okay.
to develop options to present to the facilities subcommittee. Whether it's, you know, um, years ago, we talked about expanding Cosmo in there, because Cosmo was undersized. Um, we've talked about that, and if we do that, what would we do for Cosmo, who else would we move, you know, program and webs down there. They have people in at night for their esports program, um, that Mrs. Muse loves, but they do, they actually, parents that come in and watch them, and if they were in that space,
Right.
you've got that door that provides them access to the rest of the building, they can come in, um, but until, um, drafting's been working to put together some management. Bakery's a lot bigger than you think. It has two sets of locker rooms down there, so it has bathrooms, it has an office, it has a lock-in freezer, it has the supply closet, it's big. So, we don't wanna just come to, we wanna give you multiple options, and it has access directly to outside. Not only through the mall area, but there's a door in the shop that leads directly outside, so.
All right, so now that you moved that to culinary, so how do people access the, um?
Through the guest dining room, so there's a display case in the guest dining room that sells the bakery products.
Okay, all right, I can see that, okay.
So, there is different setups down there, in the kitchen, all the bakery equipment was moved down there. Right, so they need a, it needs a floor either way.
Yeah.
Um, but again, it's just, and it's slated to come out of their revolving house, so if we decide we're gonna do something different with this program in there, you know, we can hold off, but they do need.
Now, is there still equipment in the bakery yet?
So, we just, um, sold most of it, and did a permit for Renato, and a guy came in.
Sold, okay. Really, yeah, too.
Yeah, seventeen hundred dollars, he's gonna take it all down, we, you know, disconnected some power and gas, some of it was just not even working, but
Sure.
you know, some are old, some of this company as is, decided to rein it, not send it back at all. It's the only company, we have three young people, nobody else put a price in.
So, you have an empty space that they can work with?
Right, so that's, you know, now that it's clear, they can really go in and look at what would work in, I mean, it's a great space, a lot of people, a lot of people want it, but it's what direction are we moving in, and what's the best option for the subcommittee?
You haven't, you haven't really decided yet.
No, I wanna bring options to the facilities subcommittee.
I got you, I thought, I thought it was programming, I thought programming web had their eyes on it, but.
They did, Cosmo did, Friggin' West did, um, a few people did, but I think it's, you know, my job to provide options to the facilities subcommittee.
Yes, that's.
But no, but no decisions were made yet. Okay.
And, um, have you guys had a, find a decision on that?
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
How close is the act, your actual recommendation for this year, one million, two thirty eight, one four, to last year's projection?
It is.
You know, you know how we get this neat little eight-year capital plan?
I like it.
No, I like it, but I just wanna know if we're gonna do this for an eight-year projection, in other words, how close are the actual?
They never are, it's, that's, you know, when we start getting them, um, and we like people to dream, that's something that goes way down.
No, I, I don't mean, I understand how the process works this year, but my question is, if you're gonna, if we're gonna do this on an eight-year projection, I just would like to know, you don't have to do it today, you don't have it available, but
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I wanna know how close this number is to last year's projection for this year, do you follow me? In other words, if we're projecting, it's like next year, we're projecting one million thirty-five, one fourteen, so that might be a different number.
Yes. Oh, no, these are the numbers, these are the numbers.
So, this is right on the, so if I looked at last year's chart, this is the number.
These are the same numbers, this was actually prepared by Far South West, when we borrowed the money for the fields. So, they've always prepared this, going back for as long as I've been here, we've worked with them, they've prepared it, and we've given it to all the towns, town managers, the finance committee, to you. This is something that has been done, so there was an increase in capital, I can show you the actual document that I have.
Mm-hmm. No, I understand, so if I come in next year with this chart in my hand, your projection by FY twenty-two is gonna be that number.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I was gonna question the relevancy of an eight-year projection, if we're not following it.
Nope. Nope, this, nope, absolutely, this is, the only difference would be funding, that's outside the assessment, but this, these are the numbers.
Okay, thanks, that was my question. No, I get it, I get it.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Hmm, that's it, sir.
Thank you, Melanie.
Should we, um, approve that, this now, or?
Yes, please, usually approve it in December.
I'm moved to approve the capital budget.
Second. We have a motion, uh, by Mrs. Muse and a second by Mr. Gillis to approve the capital budget as presented by the superintendent, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, your name on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business.
Personnel subcommittee.
Personnel subcommittee, Mr. Gillis.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Personnel subcommittee met this evening, and we had two agenda items, uh, number one, non-union, uh, salaries, and we discussed the position of the building maintenance director, which currently we have a, an acting individual, who have asked the superintendent to, uh, survey other vocational schools to come up with a, a posting that be pertinent to, uh, Shawshank's needs, and then we're gonna look further into it from there. The other item was the, uh, acting superintendent's, uh, contract, which shame on us, uh, expired December thirtieth, and the personnel subcommittee voted to extend it to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, at this time, I'll attend a motion, uh.
Most of you understand?
Yes.
To June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gettich and a second by Mr. Fusco, any further discussion? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, the motion carries, your name on the list.
The other agenda item was, uh, strategies and SDA negotiations, and I've been in court that, uh, negotiations are ongoing, and, um, extremely optimistic that, uh, we may have an agreement by March. Uh, just a couple items left on the table, and I'm sure that we can resolve them, if not like.
Sorry, I, I have four questions.
That concludes my report.
All right, can I, can I, we, um, ask something about what you said about, the first thing you mentioned? I think we asked her to survey salaries.
And, and the job posting.
Uh, I don't.
That would be, that would be part of the salaries, so.
Well, I don't know if that was part of it, but, was that just salaries?
I did, I did say, well. Was that the question? Yeah.
The job posting would include the posting and salary.
And the posting?
That's what I asked.
Okay, oh, all right, I didn't, all right. That's all.
New business, we've already gone over the capital budget, the annual report is in the folder for your fellows, if you have any questions, Melanie would be happy to answer them.
It's already been sent, right, excuse me?
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, it's usually the first.
Any questions, we'll pick them next year.
Yeah, it's just good positive feelings going on at this.
I know, I know.
It's good, it was well written.
Superintendent search update, we took out of order, future agenda items.
Oh, can I ask something about the superintendent's search, can we send letters to the screening committee, thanking them? For, I mean, I'm not screening.
I don't have, I, I have the names of the contact. I have, I think I, I haven't, they haven't brought up, so I would just need addresses, of course, for those that would know.
Okay.
No, I think, I think. He has all the emails.
Where is he?
Yeah, I've got the emails, but.
He must have all their contact, we can get it from her.
Yeah, I have, all I have is email addresses, I don't have addresses for those outside of the school.
That would be, uh.
And also, can we, um, send a letter to Mr. Constable, congratulating him?
Very nice article.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He's very nice.
Who's that?
The article on the coach.
Oh. He was inducted into the football hall of the coaches.
Yeah.
Any future agenda item request, can you name through Mr. Gallagher, if there are?
Okay. Oh, can I just mention, TV, for the TV audience, about Constable, that he was, um, inducted into the Hall of Fame.
Football coaches.
Yeah, it's a dinner, this, it's an annual dinner they had in May, he was, uh, nominated to the Hall of Fame.
Move to a joint?
I have one, one, just a brief thing, um, we had a presentation in the town of Bedford last week on Wednesday
Mr. Van.
from a lawyer who's actually the town lawyer for Bedford, and a few other towns, um, and on the open meeting law, and it was very interesting. And it was very interesting and a whole bunch of stuff came up and I have a whole thing. I don't know what, you know, if I can, you didn't, did you attend it?
I was gonna go, I went to the lobby.
Okay, any, anyway, um, one or two interesting points relative to us that we were discussing last year when we had only nine members on the committee, we had an open seat, uh, if five out of nine was a quorum. Uh, her interpretation of that was that it could be, but it has to be, you have to make a decision yourselves if, if you want five out of nine in that situation to be a quorum. Um, the town of Bedford has made a decision that it isn't for Bedford, for committees in Bedford. They actually have to have a majority of all the seats, regardless of whether or not they're occupied.
I think that would be a correct assessment, because if you have nine members serving, then you can make, take a vote that that nine that you are five is quorum.
Which, which she implied is that it's okay with the state either way, but, but you should specify it. She didn't really, she wasn't referencing us because I didn't ask her the question about us, but that's, that was, somebody asked her that question. Another question was if somebody's dialing in, for example, um, they don't count towards a quorum. The quorum has to be physically present.
It's always.
But peop-, yeah, but people can dial in and participate in the meeting.
Yes, we can vote.
But, no, they can vote, but they can't do like executive session, I thought is what, the way she said it, but.
I don't think they can vote.
Um, I'm not sure. Well, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you can, um, we can vote to have them be able to vote.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we actually did.
Glenn, I've seen. Actually, we did. That's part of our policy.
Yeah. I've seen that, for a record selection, had something called it, that person voted, yeah.
I thought it was just a call.
We did, but we couldn't figure it out.
Right.
We don't go out there.
Just, just one.
We did a policy, I remember the towns to.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Allow dial-ins.
Yeah, but it never worked.
But we couldn't figure out how the phone worked.
Right.
So we've allowed, we are, we allow it, but we've never actually effectively allowed it.
We haven't done it.
Yeah, no.
And, and did, we've, have we ever specified the quorum issue? We probably should.
Other than when we've had a vacancy, we haven't had to.
I know, but that's, you know, you don't have to until you have to.
Well, then you can, well, then you can do it, right? You can do it at that time.
Then you can do it.
Correct.
Yeah, you can make an adjustment.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thank, that's, that's all. It was very interesting, as much as I hate those kind of things. The, the, the woman was very, very good. Her name was Nina Pickering Cook.
Glenn, we'll make you the expert on the open meeting law.
Uh, no, I don't really want to be. Well, my wife is the board of health chairman in Bedford and she was taking copious notes.
Thank you.
Because chairman have a lot more.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Jim.
Exactly, we have a motion.
Close second.
It's on the floor.
I'm waiting for a second.
We have a motion here in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Meeting is adjourned at nine twenty six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night.